Mayor, Council, we may proceed with the City Council meeting. Call order, pledge allegiance, roll call, and then I'll do the agenda.
Thank you all for this meeting, the orders, we can outstanding pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Billie Ro- Billie Roakel, all council members are present. Excuse me?
Mayor, Council, we do have an addendum to the agenda this evening before you. We do have business item J, adding number 10, resolution 2019, setting council committee of the whole mains for your 2019. Under K, under consent, we have a re-titling of a marked, remarking of the numbering from K4 to J4. Squad car purchase, retitle council member marked K5 to J5, squad car purchase. A retitle council memo marked K9 to K, excuse me, K6 to K9 and K4 to K8. This was due to just errors on the numbering within the packet is what those consent items are. And then is to add number nine, under consent agenda, resolution 2019, approving assignment of neighborhood stabilization program. Mortgage right pertaining to 1111 Maplewood Drive Southwest. And then under L, other communications, we have added draft minutes for the January 15, 2019 planning commission minutes. Adding L3, draft minutes for the January 24, 2019 open session of the closed session meeting. L4, draft minutes for the January 24, 2019 open session of special closed meetings. L5, draft minutes for the 2000, excuse me, January 24, 2019 open session of the closed special closed meeting.
Motion to accept the...
I have a motion to accept by Councilman Bergman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Lundin. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. I have a motion to approve City Council meeting minutes from January 15, 2019.
Don't move.
Second. Motion by Lundin, second by Collison, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Announcements. Committee of the whole Tuesday, February 19 at 5:45. City council meeting Tuesday, February 19 as well at 7:00 PM. Planning commission meeting immediately following the city council meeting. And a parking act. Culture board meeting Tuesday, February 27 at 6:00 PM. Council committee reports.
I just have a question for staff, we don't really have committees anymore to report from, but I just do have a question for staff. What's the status of deferred assessments from annexations? And how are we going for proceeding to collect on those?
I'm Don Morrison, Ray Green, let's go.
Mary Johnson, Councilman, Council and Councilor Rehnsor. At this point, I believe we will, we probably will need to review that. I don't think we've discussed any theory yet this year.
Okay.
Yes, that stuff has to be looked at. Probably should be discussed, should be brought at Committee of the Whole meeting.
Okay. So we also have a property that was a church and now isn't. Can we just make sure that we look at that, make sure the tax values being collected from that this year too?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilor Rehnsor, I will check with instructor Mike Becker on this as well and we'll bring it forward to committee of the whole.
Thank you.
We have any public hearings? Ms. Wood?
No, we do not.
Therefore, are there any business items? I believe we have a few of those going on.
Day one will be snow plowing policy, put out for discussion as request from Councilor Rehnsor.
Okay, this got brought up as the year started, it appeared that the snow plowing policy was changed without council direction. And I just want to know what we're doing differently, why we're leaving ice on our roads. And it's just different than last time, so I'm just wondering what's the difference between fall and winter? Last year and every other year prior, just since the new year happened, have we changed something? Every year I've been able to put a sandie on a higher pedestal than any other city in the metro area pretty much. Because we do such a good job at cleaning our roads. In addition to that, I know prior, when I left council and Adam Johnson was on council, I believe, under the previous Public Works Director, there was discussion with council about using more salt, less sand, and getting our roads clear initially. So we don't end up with an ice pack underneath them. There's two different schools of opinions. Either leave ice and snow on the road, get it back down, or you remove it with more salt and less sand and deal with it. And I know there was discussion when I was not on council with the previous Public Works Director, I believe, that recommended to do the salt, more salt, clear the roads. And that was direction by council to do that. And we've had no new direction since then, and obviously something has changed. So I'm just wondering what's changed and how that happened.
I wasn't aware of any...
I wasn't aware of anything changed, but Ms. Wood, you carry the library?
Councilor Rehnsor and Mayor and other council members, I cannot speak to exactly what was said from former Public Works Director, Flash Hacker. I would have to review and see if there are memos and things put together on exactly what his recommendation has been. I nor can speak to other plowing years prior to four years, because that's how long I've been making the snow calls. Anything that I say going forward here will be based on my results and my experience and exactly how I made those judgment calls on when to plow the streets. I would like to make sure that I mention though publicly that I do really appreciate the great efforts that all of our Public Works staff does put in and the endless hours that they put into plowing. What I have, and this would be what was provided in the packet, is resolution approving the snow plowing policy and operational guidelines. This has been reviewed by the Public Works Committee, which we had up until this year. Every approximately October, November, to council member who sat on that, discussions would ensue. We would make recommendations to council based on what things were going on. I am very diligent about making sure that I'm doing things the right way and following policy as best I can with every T crossed, every I dotted. This is my working document that I go from. Now I will say, when it says that we will plow at two inches, there are other judgment calls and making sure that the roads are clear for safety reasons. And it takes a lot of variables into consideration. In regards to your question about what was done differently this year than other three years that I have been doing the snow plowing calls, I would say not much. We do have additional equipment that allows us to do a pre-treatment process, which we didn't have prior to this winter season. We tried to utilize that because of cost. It lower, it comes at a cheaper cost to purchase salt brine. We get that from Cambridge up in dots, shed and other factors as well. But what we had different this year than we had in the other three years that I've done plowing here is extreme amount of ice storms. We've not had those in the other years. I will say that we tried to combat that as best we could. I know that we were on the roads and by we, I say me and the public, all the Public Works plow drivers. And all the equipment that we have, earlier than any other city that was near us. We specifically on the night of the ice storm, when it was raining, that was on, so Saturday, I believe it was December, maybe 30th or 29th or something, I could look it up. I drove through the city myself at 6 o'clock PM. I called them in, they were in within the hour to make sure that they were clearing that slush off. So we could make sure that we did not have adherence to the roads as best we could. When we talk about calling drivers in for situations like that to make sure that the roads are being the best that they can be, I put every piece of equipment that I have, that's three plow trucks and a grader, that's what we have. I use the skidsters for sidewalks. We use the loader for mainly doing some plowing of park, lot, all the parking lots as well as the alleys. I would say that we did the best that we could in the snow event that we had.
Okay.
Also, Councilmember Rehnsor, to answer your question, why we went to great salt? That was due to our storm on our runoff. And that was a consensus of all council members, because it is very expensive. The streets sweeten the spring, and that's why we went away from salt or sand. And that's also...
So you remember the discussion, because I wasn't talking here.
Yes, and the state even, their recommendation was the same. It's a lot better to clean up and a lot less clean up in the spring. And matter of fact, I hate to say it, our previous mayor, that was his idea also.
Okay. And...
Well, he brought it up.
I brought it up, why aren't we using...
And I know that was, I think it was Nick at the time was the Public Works Director.
I brought it up in public work.
He brought it up and Mayor actually was 100% agreeable.
So now here's my, I got a few examples that I want to bring up. We had, back in 2012 or 2013, there was a huge ice storm with two, three feet of snow on top of it. I had been blamed at the time. We had school cancellations, blame plows, couldn't get my roads plowed until 4:00, 5:00 PM. City of Isani's roads were clear and ice free when I came up here to pick my kid up at 2:30. Or later on the day, I don't remember exactly the hours, but the next day that our roads were clear and better than any natural street. Because we did something different than right. We had a storm this year with ice. The snow and ice that melted fast, filled our gutters with ice, with snow. It turned to ice immediately. And then the next day or two, within the week, it turned to slush and nobody cleaned up the slush. And then it turned to ice, which we currently have at the bottom of all of our driveways. That never happened in previous years. We had a two-inch snowfall that the plows are now out on the road prior to the buses. So kids are on the street with slippery roads waiting for buses. That was about two, three weeks ago. Josie, have you reduced the amount of salt that you're using?
No, I have not.
Have you and I had a discussion?
I can tell you how much salt we've gone through this.
Did you and I have a discussion about reduce, that you were reducing the amount of salt being used in your office at City Hall about a month ago?
You asked me if I had reduced.
And did you tell me you have?
No, I did not.
You told me, Josie, that you had a discussion with Mayor Johnson to reduce the amount of salt, and you took that, you did not use his direction, but you took it upon yourself to reduce the amount of salt used on the road. You told me that yourself, and if you're not telling the truth, we have an issue.
I clarified when you had asked me, so he told you to use less salt. What I had stated from my recollection is that I said, you know, for every complaint that we have, that we want to use more salt, we have an equal amount of complaints. And I did state that Mayor Jeff Johnson had received complaints that we used too much salt. And you said, so his direction was to tell you to use less salt, and I said, no.
And then you said that you took it upon yourself to make that decision to use less salt.
Councilor Rehnsor, we have gone through approximately 275 tons of salt this year, this season. If I was trying to reduce it, I would be doing a poor job of it.
Then clearly there's a reduction though, because we haven't, there's been something different and nobody's willing to tell me. Also, our city code requires us, city staff is directed by city council to enforce city code. City staff does not have the ability to make their own decisions about what to enforce and what not to enforce in city code. If they don't like it, they need to bring it to council, and council can change code so they can change the way they, the way they decide stuff. Up until I brought anything to Josie Wood, we did nothing about the ice on our sidewalks. Whether our Public Works removes it or we require our residents to remove it, I don't care. City code tells us we need to require, the residents are required to remove their ice. We sent out letters because I said something, and then immediately the letters were stopped at direction of city staff, which is not, which is not something city staff has the authority to do. You have to take your direction from city council as a whole.
Councilor Rehnsor, I do know that, but you have expressed concern, Mayor Johnson had also expressed concern, and I have received a number of complaints from citizens as well as residents and owners, I should say, of the apartment buildings over on the other side of the highway as well as over on this side. We started sending some letters out to the education, to say that we did nothing on the sidewalks would not be correct. Because from the get-go, any city sidewalk that abuts city property, we had been dealing with the ice and putting out salt-sand mix where we could, that was abutting our property, because that's what city code states. That was done. We started putting letters out. And I can tell you that Public Works, who posted the doors, who approximately, I don't know the exact number, but it was approximately 110 homes that had ice outside of their home that was greater than a panel wide. So it was a safety concern. What had happened is City Hall got flooded with phone calls. We couldn't keep up. I got concerns from staff. I had angry residents here. I had lots of complaints, and all of this, I do have going to the Committee of the Whole for discussion, as I had shared with you previously, to be discussed, because it's a greater magnitude. No one was aware of that city policy. It had never been acted upon and residents notified in that manner.
How could we have never acted upon it when we have code enforcement and we've dealt with it? We've never had this much ice on our sidewalks, even in a nice year.
To my knowledge...
They've been doing something.
Councilor Rehnsor, to my knowledge and to the staff that I sought out, Mr. Lawson as well as the staff that we currently have, and now not all those staff are seasoned, had not sent out any letters regarding ice.
And why wasn't that, those calls just directed to matter code enforcement? And have they handled that?
They were.
Okay.
They were, but the letters were from code enforcement.
There's something different that you guys, how it's always happened in the past, when there's something that staff wants to get, that staff has to act on because it's in city code, their response to residents are, if you don't like it, come to the city council, make an voice of your opinion. And then we can change it, but until that's done, we can't change it, maybe to remove your ice. But that wasn't done. City staff just immediately stopped enforcing the law because they wanted to, which isn't your authority. And now we're here with still another week or two gone by, where we still have ice on sidewalks, and somebody's going to get hurt and we're going to get sued, or somebody's going to get sued because nobody's enforcing it. I don't care who removes the ice, it's just we need to have a safe city.
It doesn't state it in my policy or the city's policy on snow removal, that's, that Public Works can remove the ice except for on property, sidewalks that are abutting the property that the city owns. That is what I have done to follow the policy. That's why it's going to Committee of the Whole to discuss what we are going to do as the sidewalks and bike walk trails as a whole throughout the whole city. Because I don't have direction, it doesn't state it in my six-page policy.
Until then, you enforce our city code.
The city code doesn't say exactly what to do, it just says that, that it is the property's, it's also the property owner's responsibility. Doesn't, I should pass with me, I don't, we could pull it up. That they have to continually remove the snow. That's in there as well on the sidewalk.
It's little amounts of snow that the city doesn't plow.
It doesn't define what little would be. You say little, I say a lot, it doesn't matter. It doesn't define it by inches or any kind of quantity, which would be something that we would send out.
The city plows our sidewalks, we, that got put in, I tried to push that through in 2009 and it got denied. And then when I was off council, it got put in.
It was 2014, it was put into place, that's a policy that we remove the snow.
We remove the snow, and then the residents keep it up.
Right. Those letters have also not been sent up. Informing the public in a way that we can get the word out to everyone would be a great thing to inform them of that.
Which was probably done in 2014, and we've adhered to it since then.
Again, to my knowledge and the staff that I spoke to, no one was aware of sending, sending out nuisance letters for those purposes.
Mayor Johnson, Council, Council... With this issue, I just wonder what else there is that we're not being told and what other codes city staff is not adhering to and not, not doing. You know, it's that just, city staff needs to enforce city code. And it's bottom line, that's what you need to do. We don't have authority not to.
I'd just like to state that last year in Public Works Committee, Councilor Collison and I and Josie Woods, and Don was at most of the meetings, and we poured over the snow removal policy. And, you know, we're fortunate to have Councilman Collison on the committee when we had that committee, because he always had such great ideas being on the Cambridge Public Works and snow removal and that type of thing. And Josie had a lot of great ideas, and I was always impressed with, with their ideas. And then we took all those ideas and we put it before council and, I don't know. I have a hard time myself, I'm not saying you're wrong, I just have a hard time questioning Josie Wood's ability after sitting in Public Works Committee with her, so.
I'm not questioning her ability, I'm just saying something has changed, and nobody's telling me what's changed. Obviously something's changed, because our roads are covered in ice and our sidewalks are covered in ice.
It's a different year, as Josie said, I think her work, when she says that we have ice coming down on the sidewalks...
But our city is doing nothing.
I spun, I spun on Super Bowl night, I spun everywhere I went, and I'm still slipping a little bit, you know. I was going up and down Highway 65, which has nothing to do with the city of Isani, other than it passes through our town and...
We're not disagree, we're not going to disagree that it's been a different weather pattern, for sure.
And every other year, the city of Isani has had a higher standard than the county, a higher standard than the state, and the roads have been clearer than that. Our residents have made it clear that that's what they want to, in previous years when we put out residents'...
Mayor Johnson, Council, in the past, we have done selective enforcement of ice issues on sidewalks. I have not seen a year like this in a long time where we've had as much ice on the sidewalks. Part of the issue when people are contacting back to the city is that temperatures are so cold and the ice is so thick, and just from a practical basis, getting it off of their sidewalks was an issue.
But the temperatures haven't been cold all year. They haven't been. We had the cold polar vortex, but we've had other ices that were not removed.
And I'm not going to argue the point, I'll just say that during the time period when we were dealing with this, there was cold temperatures and the ice was not melting.
And I get that.
In closing, Ms. Wood, this is on a Committee of the Whole meeting, correct?
Mayor, Council, this is the, the subject of reviewing exactly how we deal with ice on sidewalks as well as the, the two-minute trails, yes, is on Committee of the Whole for discussion. But I would like to also discuss, or just share in rebuttal of Councilor Rehnsor to say that we've done nothing. I would like to then present to council of when we have come in to plow, because I have records of all of that. I don't have them present to read to you. But on every event that we have, I incessantly watch the weather, whether it's in the middle of the night, middle of the day. Excuse me. And I text Public Works usually, or sometimes person, depending on the event of the, the time of the date of the snowstorm. Is have them come in, I would have record of all that to show you when we have come in, and then we can go from that.
And I want to clarify, I didn't say you've done nothing, you guys have done a lot of snow removal. I said there's been nothing done on the ice removal for the sidewalks, and that is not an inaccurate statement. We put out letters and then we did nothing. We're now kicking the can to the next, to the next Committee of the Whole meeting, which I don't care. I don't care how long we kick this can of how, of how long we're going to change, when we're going to change the policy of our snow removal. What I care about is that our city code is being adhered to in between that time. City staff needs to uphold the city code at the direction of the council. And the current direction of the council is to have, to get the ice removed by the residents. And you need to continue doing that until you're told otherwise. Unless this meet, and that's why I put this on the, on the council meeting, so if this council wants to change that right now, they can tell you to do nothing. But as it stands right now, you guys have to adhere to the city code and get that ice removed off the sidewalks before somebody busts their head open and sues us for doing nothing. Because they're not going to sue the homeowner on, that the sidewalk that butts on city property that the homeowner's required to do it, because they're not going to sue them, they're going to come to the city, because the city has the funds to sue. And if the city's not upholding their code, they're going to be liable, and that's what I'm worried about. I don't, if this council wants to give a different direction, I don't care. I'm hopeful for something I don't believe in, but that's the process of the city. And it seems like that's been a very, very, very confusing thing with, since the beginning of the year and prior to the beginning of the year. Because we've had, and you know, I, our previous mayor was very well, very involved, and I think city staff took direction from him, that they may have, may or may not have, should have taken direction. And it seems to me like the city staff believes the mayor is the supervisor. And it's the city council that supervises. City council as a whole makes decisions. And that it seemed like it's been very, very confused by our staff. So that's what I want to make sure is clear. If council wants to make a motion and change our policy right now, it doesn't matter. But if they don't, we need to uphold the city code.
Councilor Rehnsor, I am very aware of what has been done in the past and what my role, who, what I'm doing in my role as city minister is to make sure that I buy, and I cannot tell you the many times that I've consulted the lead of Minnesota cities as well as attorneys, to make sure that I am doing everything going forward, exactly in an ethical manner that it should be. And no, I do not take direction from one council member over another, it's council as a whole. I know that we're a statutory A city in what form of government we run in, and take it very seriously.
So let's enforce the city code unless it's changed.
I would like direction from council to enforce, to direct me to then send out code enforcement letters in a manner that is confusing to the residents or exactly how they would want it stated, because it's challenging to make sure that we're getting that awareness out.
Oh, let me ask this, Councilman Rehnsor, did you get a letter? Because I did.
Did you get one, get a letter? I don't have a sidewalk.
I did, and I don't even have a sidewalk, but I got one, and you know that letter was pretty threatening.
Then change the letter to make it not threatening, I don't care. But we need to get the ice removed, and if the city, if council wants to make a different direction, they can. But right, not...
And I'm not disagreeing with you, Councilman Rehnsor. The only thing I'm seeing is the reason, from my understanding, the letter was stopped, because it was supposed to be informal and it didn't go out that way.
We wrote, the letter was written in a manner that was consistent with code enforcement regulations, similar to what we would do for a nuisance lawn out there, that's how it was written. So saying that there is, could be penalties and what exactly has been done in a certain timeframe is how that letter was written.
I remember reading the letter that said, if I didn't clean it up in 48 hours, I'd be fined.
You could be fined.
Clean it up or do something. If you can't get the ice off the road, all you have to do is put some grit on there and make it safe.
Mayor, Council, what we expressed for concerns from the residents was, where do they get the salt? Can they get it from Public Works? How do they remove it when it's frozen? Do they need to chip it away? Can they put sand on it? They had a number of questions, and I've had, actually Matt Lindholm has done a fantastic job with catalog logging every single phone call, which will be brought to Committee of the Whole, because this is a bigger issue than just sending out nuisance letters. Because I also want to be cognizant of the fact that when they put out salt in there, and they may or may not know that it's going to work in zero-degree temperatures, but the fact of the matter is that the salt is really not going to do that great of a job at, if any job, at zero degrees. And then the next snow event, Public Works will come and plow the snow off and plow their salt off. It was very discouraging for the residents. I wanted to just be cognizant and make sure that I'm hearing that the residents have some major concerns as well.
But if we would have been doing this all year long from the beginning, like we do with our parking enforcement, we wouldn't have heard boo about it, because people would have kept on top of it. The issue we're having is nobody kept on top of it, because the city staff didn't get out letters ever this year or last year in the snow until I said something that was a problem. And I didn't notice it until it was a problem, because I'm not a Public Works person. I just am a city council member that looks and notices things. And I didn't notice it till it was a problem, but if we would have dealt with it per city code in September, October, November, nobody would have any questions, just like they don't have any questions about the snow plowing policy. And they get tickets now if they're on the road in violation of the snow plowing policy. We do a very good job at that. So all I'm saying is I want city code adhered to in every aspect. If it's not being adhered to, we need to bring it to council and get a decision made. If somebody wants to make a motion right now, they can make a motion and change it. But as it stands right now, it's, you've got your code to follow. And letters can be, people can take a letter as threatening, but like you joked, like the city minister has said, we have to follow rules for letters. And all of last year, I think we only had 600 to 700 issues with our code violation. I think we only had 17 citations issued, and all of them were remedied. So we don't come out to our residents with an iron fist and demand everything, all of them, and write tickets galore. You know, getting these letters out, our code enforcement officer is not a police officer for a reason. He doesn't, he's, he's not trained to go banging on people's doors and have heated discussions with people like police officers are. That's why the letters go out, because it's, A, probably quicker, and B, he doesn't have to get into the fight with all these residents, and that's not his role. And we clearly made that not his role, for safety and everything.
That same quote, Mayor, Councilor Rehnsor, that same council, or staff member that you're speaking of for code enforcement, was very concerned about taking all these calls and being able to...
to give them the answers and help them out, and Don also fielded some of those calls as well. You can also attest to, he was very concerned, he had some very, very angry residents coming to him.
Then send them to the meeting.
Yeah.
And then we can talk to them. It, city, that city staff has done it over and over again. You don't like our answer, we have to abide by city code, and if you don't like it, go to the meeting. Talk. It's transparent. And I haven't heard a motion yet, so I'm going to move on.
Why trust city staff? What are your conclusions? Do you see a problem here? I mean, we're sitting with doing Public Works, I believe you've done a great job, so, as far as, I believe it's a different year, I watch the weather, I'm in tune with the weather, I'm outside all the time, so.
Councilmember Lawrence, I appreciate your kind words, thank you. What my, what I, my recommendation was, as I stated in my minister's memo that went out last week, is that we have ceased them till we can have further discussion on exactly how to remedy the situation. The next upcoming meeting is the Committee of the Whole on the 19th. If we had a meeting prior, I would obviously give it on prior, but that is the next upcoming meeting.
So I can turn to you, Councilor Lawrence, you want to motion? I want your motion out to you, go ahead.
I don't need to make a motion, there's current, there is current policy, current city code that is in place, and I want the city staff to follow this current city code, there's no motion.
When I look across the council, nobody else seems to have a reason to have a motion either, so then, are you done? Can we move on, please?
We can move on.
Thank you. All right.
Ms. Wood, continue on, please. We have the city administrator, Josie Woods, and the resolution for the 2019, sorry, I should have read this, for the resolution of the 2019 approving a special land permit application for the Arts and Science Academy 5K color room. Is Ms.?
I don't know if she is able to be here after the late meetings. So, Mayor, council, we have heard that she did reach out to city staff and let them know, so Ms. Lori Henderson had emailed that she had gone and been ditched on her way here, so she is not able to attend. However, I can speak on behalf of the special event permit. Park Record Culture Manager Katie Everett has worked with her before, we've had this event in town, and we have no cause for concern, it's been signed off by all the pertinent city staff, and are required to review the site layout, as well as everything else in the special event permit, and I have an approval of this.
Second. Motion by Councilman Lawrence, or second by Councilman Lundin to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion passes. Resolution for 2019 final plat of Heritage Estates subdivision. Mr. Lawrence.
Mayor Johnson, City Council, Level Contracting has submitted and paid all applicable fees for the development of a fit-to-lot subdivision located on Outlots A, B, and D of Sun Prairie First Edition. The development is located along Cherrywood Lane Northeast and 9th Avenue Northeast. Planning Commission is an opportunity to review this project at several locations, including during the public hearings held in the preliminary plat, planning the development won't done November 2018. Both the preliminary plat and P U V have been reviewed and approved by the council. Planning Commission is not recommending approval of the final plat with the conditions as attached.
Make a motion to accept with conditions set or attached. I have a motion to accept with conditions by Councilman Lundin, and a second by Councilman Lawrence, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution for 2019 approving the purchase of a 2019 dumpster angle, all-wheel drive pursuit.
I'll just make a motion to approve this item, the next drangle, the asphalt roller, the hot patch trailer, and the skater surface upgrades.
Councilman Lawrence makes a motion to approve items four through nine.
Second.
Councilman Collison, second, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. All motions carrying. Do I have an approval for the consent agenda?
Mayor, council, did, yeah, I did not hear on, you said number nine, but I did not hear the, to move forward with the dog park, did I miss that?
No, I didn't put that on there.
Oh, my mistake.
Okay.
Sorry, Councilman Lawrence, I almost called you that word, you-
You know.
I did say four through eight, sorry. So I'm looking for a resolution on the 2019 authorizing city staff to move forward with the dog park development. Do you have information on that, Ms. Wood?
Mayor, council, that's-
City Minister, we're looking for, what we're looking for, my only concern with the dog park, Cambridge has a lot of issues with cleanup, so I just want to make sure when we're looking into this, that we talk about cleanup. I've heard a lot of complaints in Cambridge, both at both of the locations that they, the one they used to have and the one they currently have, there's a huge cleanup issue, so I just need to check that.
Sure, Councilor Lawrence, this is a conceptual plan, because this has been included in the budget, but just putting preliminary images down on concept, concepts of the layout, but yes, this whole item has been discussed in the Park Record Culture Board, I believe that they have discussed that, and regarding putting out the daygie, doggie disposal bags there, we are aware that Public Works will likely have to do, I would say, patrolling for that, but, you know, looking at what we do in other parks, when we come across it, there's a need to clean up, we do clean up. It's very, it would, in my mind, be a tough thing to police, to ensure that people clean up after their own dogs, however, we will try to ensure that it is clean in an appropriate manner, and if we have to do that in-house, we may.
Sometimes clear signage saying this park will, in a polite big way, this park will go away.
I think they're doing that, I think they're doing that at the entrance of it, of the parking lot, and the entrance of, if I recall from the meeting I attended, and the entrance of the actual dog park. I think they have that assigned.
Well, they have, they do have rules, it's provided in packet in the back, this is what the Park Record Culture Board, it says J. 7 anger packet, has, I'm not sure if it says that this would go away, but-
You know, and just what I'm saying, you know, I think people would trust us in signs of just very clear that the park is a privilege for that we're doing for this park, and if people don't take care of it, it's our responsibility to take care of it as residents, and if people don't take care of it, something on the-
I can definitely, Councilor Lawrence, pass that concern on to Katie Everett, she can bring that to the park board for further discussion on exactly how that could be written.
I know. When I-
Second.
Do we want to put any conditionary on that, Councilman Lawrence?
This is just a conceptual plan, it will be coming back for more in-depth discussion.
I have a motion by Councilman Lawrence, and a second by Councilman Lundin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Mayor, council, we have, for the addendum, we have added J. 10, which could be resolution setting council committee on the whole meetings for the year of 2019.
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion by Councilman Lawrence, and a second by Councilman Lundin, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Anything else, Ms. Wood?
We are on to consent.
Do you need any neighborhood stabilization?
Neighborhood stabilization was underneath the-
Mayor Johnson, councilmembers, Councilor Lawrence, yeah, we had, we had added that in on a consent agenda, and what this is, is the home went into foreclosure, actually it was sold unbeknownst to us, then went into foreclosure.
I think it actually was in foreclosure, and the owner during the redemption period, sold, sold.
Thank you, Clark. And so we're in, in the process of trying to recruit as much residual money left that they owed programs, they didn't, they were not in the property long enough to, you know, gain a full forgiveness of the NSP loan, so that's we're looking at assigning the rights, because the purchaser threw foreclosure, will be paying us that difference of money, and that had been through, through the Minnesota housing finances.